Six thirty-three, all the order that what complaining board meeting for July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, this is why this meeting has been important. First thing we have is the draft meeting minutes from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, yes, the uh, meeting minutes were reviewed um, by Chuck. He found an error that was corrected and um, I did not receive any other edits.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from June thirtieth.
I'll second.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, second one is the reorganization, appoint CM RPC representatives.
Um, you might want to wait for Mr. Fowler because you need to vote officers and then vote um, delegates as well to CM RPC. Caroline Fritz had served as one of your delegates and um, I think I hadn't told Brian, but um, she has resigned from the board. So, you're gonna want to talk about who wants that second spot.
So, we'll wait for him. Uh, next one is the annual Worcester District Re- Registry of Deed Signature Form. We have to pass that around.
That's been passing around.
Okay, the next item is a request for determination of completeness, approval of ASBIL plan and release of peer review funds, one thirty-seven East Main Street, Noria Energy Corporation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, um, staff has um, well, I could, I'll let Chuck speak for himself. Um, there was some question about the landscaping plan um, being built to, you know, to make sure, yeah, microphone.
Yes. Hit, no, hit the little, there you go.
My name is Tom Healy from Noria Energy and um, what Ms. Morgan was talking about on the landscaping plan was when we put the landscaping in um, there was some confusion from, on my behalf, when I talked to landscapers. So, we had um, I think a total of two less trees than what was called for on the plan. Uh, since we planted those trees, the only change we made was to relocate one of the trees that was right at the car wash exit, which would be a flowering tree and leaves falling and it just didn't feel like it was a good location for that tree to be placed. Uh, in addition, I, I had pointed out in the submittal that um, we did go well above and beyond what was called for in the landscape plan, but it was, there were um, a hundred fifty-eight plantings called for on the plan and um, we ended up putting three hundred twenty-four plantings, so we over-doubled that and uh, just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and uh, respectfully request that um, you accept the uh, the changes to the landscaping.
Yes, and for um, Mr. Healy was good about sending us um, photographs of the, the two new trees that have gone in, which really look very nice, in my opinion. I'm a tree person. Uh, one thing I wanted to draw your attention to, and this was um, mentioned by our highway superintendent, is that um, okay, the pavement in the road was replaced as a wedge. There's a, there should be a condition of approval for um, for the ASBIL plan where they're gonna maintain that entryway. I've got the language, Chuck can explain if you'd like.
Sure, so, at the, at the entrance, uh, to, to maintain the elevation of the, the sidewalk and the concrete apron, uh, and not necessarily reconstruct and change the cross-section of the gutter at the, at the entrance, uh, a wedge course of pavement was, was put in. And the, the issue with that is that, you know, plows may tear that wedge course of pavement up, so you have like, kind of a slope of pavement coming up to where the concrete driveway apron is. And so there was just some concern about that possibly being damaged by plows. Um, so, like Ann said, yeah, we were, the contractor, I think, is uh, is warranting that for Noria or something to that effect.
So, if something does happen, he's gonna fix it, if it happens?
Yes.
And that's with the ASBIL review?
So, yeah, no, the ASBIL, uh, every, the ASBIL is all set, um, and just as Mr. Healy was, was commenting on with the, the trees, that was really the only uh, the only change.
So, staff would recommend determination, completeness, and approve the ASBIL plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the uh, the ASBIL plan, um, also in the release of peer review funds as well.
There are no more peer review funds. The last payment was made today, so it's just determination.
Okay, so it's determination of uh, completeness, um, also with the, we have to include the language of, uh, the maintenance language as well, as a condition?
Yes.
And the, yeah, right, and the approval of that maintenance condition as well.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I'll, I'll let the building commissioner now to issue a, a final seal. Thank you.
Next item is a request for determination, change of use in site plan requirement, change of use from vacant to retail sales of outdoor equipment, including sales of firearms, including assembly, disassembly, part replacement and accessories. Two fifty-one Main Street, Suite Two, Ryan Kwong, Nomex Outfitters LLC applicant, Michelle Nigel, property owner.
Uh, I think he's here to make a presentation. I just want to make you aware that we did ask for a request uh, for department comments. Um, the police chief had some very specific questions which um, were asked of the applicant and answered to his satisfaction. And um, then there were a couple of other comments that weren't relevant to site plan review, but the building owner has been made aware of, or the proper, the applicant's been made aware of. This is a situation where our bylaw requires that if there's a change of use, that somebody has to do a site plan. And sometimes, you've seen this before, sometimes the need for site plan um, is not necessary, but it's your determination to say, yeah, you're gonna have to come back with the site plan, show us the parking, do all this stuff, um, explain other things. You can, if you determine that this um, does not require a site plan, you can take a vote on that with um, the three of you and then a memo gets written to the town clerk and explains any kind of special, you know, conditions or anything that, that you would like to see in that decision.
All right, somebody to... Turn the mic back on and say your name. Yep?
Test. Hi, my name is Ryan Kwong of, I'm a sole member of Nomex Outfitters LLC at two fifty-one Main Street, uh, Suite Two. So, the reason why I'm here today is to request that a site plan review is not needed, uh, given the low scope and low impact of my current business. So, given this proposed business, it's, it's in a office retail space that's less than one hundred fifty square feet, so it's not that big. Uh, in terms of like, the business itself, it's mainly focused on outdoor gear, so hiking, camping, uh, dog toys, with a component of a federal firearms license. Uh, in this case, I think the initial uh, concern, uh, when reaching out to the Zona's office was that the parking, uh, I think Ann said that there was needed of five more parking or changes to existing parking space. But given this is a part-time venture for myself, uh, it's only opened twice a week so far and it's in the late evening. And every time I've been to the office during peak hours, it's always been more than five-plus parking spots in the street and also in the municipal parking in the rear.
Where's it gonna be, two fifty-one?
I'm trying to find the actual building.
That's two fifty-three, so is the next one over? That one?
Yeah, the building itself is a bit confusing. I think on record, it's two fifty-three to two fifty-five, but the mail-in address is two fifty-one Main Street.
Yeah.
Okay, was that the one that used to be the uh, Thai food restaurant?
No. It's where they go.
Oh.
It's where they have the sign for the, uh...
But so with the business itself, it's no changes to the exterior, nothing done to the interior, no signage, no, none of your utilities needs to be changed right now. It's just walk-in, running, that's it.
But you've got a plan on just being open two days, or you're gonna...
Uh, open a few days for now. Uh, I do work full-time and this is just a side venture, it's something that I'm just getting my feet wet a little bit, uh, something that I've been passionate about and I'm just taking the leap of faith right now and, you know, doing something I kind of love. Uh, but as mentioned, this is uh, just a side venture, so most of the sales probably are online and all the retail sales that are in-person are only done by appointment only, so I expect very minimal traffic to begin with.
Mr. Chairman, you could, this is his um, this is his outline of his proposal. He's saying, uh, open Tuesdays and Wednesdays from five to six. You could specify that in a determination if you wanted.
What were the department com, you said there were department comments, Ms. Morgan?
Yes. So, let's see. The assessor, okay, so, his, his concern is the other uses in the building. I guess this building recently changed hands, so there's still not a lot of information about what's happening in the building. That was his comment. Conservation, no comment. Town administrator, um, curious as to this particular, why this particular location?
What about the police department? I said we were talking about firearm sales.
Yeah, okay.
That would be...
So, his question related to storage of firearms, ammunition of firearms, parts on premises. I reached out to um, the applicant here, made him aware of the comments. He got in touch with the chief and I don't know why I didn't post those, but yeah, the chief got back to me and said, "I'm good." And that is in the project file.
And is securely part of something that we consider for a site plan review?
Uh, no, and he follows, um, his um, ATF license covers all of that, so...
Do you sell ammo too, or just...
Uh, I will be applying for license to sell ammo, but personally, I don't think I'll be selling ammo at this time. But everything will be following federal and state regulations, so with the building, it has its own security infrastructure already in place. I think it's uh, Beacon Industries that's taking care of that and I'm, I also have my own personal security setup from the unit as well.
Well, I think it's an old building. It's been there since the, well before probably the eighties.
Yeah.
So, if we do a site plan review, obviously we can't do landscaping because he doesn't own the building. You're renting, right?
Correct.
You're renting. Um, I think any of you...
There's a song, there could be no signs advertising.
Oh, he's, you're not doing any signs advertising?
No.
No signs advertising, so, I think in occupancy, see it's better than a vacancy, in my opinion. And I think, you know, if we condition it five to six on Tuesdays and Wednesdays...
Yeah, but these hours might change, uh, so these hours are set by the ATF and what I uh, put in as a request. So, depending on like, you know, certain times of year, this could change, but it would never be open like, seven days a week or anything crazy like that.
So, what's the maximum number of hours? Cause I only want to go through this once if we can, I don't want to have you come back.
Yeah, um, it's, it's tough to say. Uh, I'm expecting my first child right now, so I, I, I'm not sure, but maybe two or three times a week and maybe max four hours each time.
So, you're looking for twelve hours of operation?
Correct.
Okay. So, if we said maximum operating hours of twelve day, twelve hours in, in seven days?
Yeah, well, that's all in writing, right?
No. With no more than, what we say, four hours at a time, so that would...
Okay.
What do you think, Kathy?
Mine's just the security part of it.
Yeah.
Cause you're downtown, there guns and there's parts and, yeah, that's my only thing.
The state regulates a lot of that, right?
Yeah, everything is state, following state regulations in federal, um, so like I said, the building has its own infrastructure that they're recently installed for security. I also have my own that's professionally monitored twenty-four seven, uh, like I said, to emphasize everything's following regulations, so locked up and whatnot.
So, they come by and do an inspection, make sure it's all...
Yeah, so depending on the approval of this, the ATF agent will come and inspect it uh, this week.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's my concern too, is security, but if security isn't part of our site plan review, and how do we, that might be an overreach of what we're...
I get that.
Besides that, I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with the site plan.
All right.
True.
Um, so...
Yeah, so what should we do? Should we make a motion to...
Determine that it doesn't require a site plan review and direct staff to submit a memo to the town clerk to that effect.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to determine that the change of use for two hundred fifty-one Main Street does not need a site plan review and to submit a memo to the town clerk stating such and also to include such conditions as we discussed.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
So, next we have a site plan, special permit, stormwater permit application, additions to existing building, nineteen Thompson Road, Assessor ID seventy-seven dash A dash thirteen, seventy-seven dash A dash twenty-two dash two, Place Motors Inc., applicant owner, site located in both the Business Four B Four and the Lake Watershead Protection, LWP zoning district, continued from six thirty to twenty-five.
Um, Mr. Fowler isn't here, um, but at the time of vote, he can watch the video and sign a Mullen certification prior to vote, so um, I'll let Chuck give you enough, an engineering update from his perspective and we can go from there.
Should we make Brian...
Beg your pardon?
Should Brian, have him vote on this too, or...
Really?
Oh, we're not really voting today anyway, right?
Um, no, cause you have to appoint before the, did we um, yes, we must have appointed Brian.
I think we did last time, right?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I appointed for a few things.
Yeah, so you're okay.
So, so, engineering wise, uh, the engineering comments have been addressed. Two, two items for your consideration, uh, one being that if you should approve the, the application, um, they will have to do soil infiltration testing prior to construction and, you know, obviously any, any changes that uh, that come about from that would, would need to come back before the board. Uh, the other item is they need to submit a, the legal instrument that um, you put notification on the deed for your stormwater management, so those, so I have those two comments.
And you've, you've conditioned that before as part of the permit, so that's not unusual.
Okay. All right, let's turn on the mic there.
Um, hi, Jason Dubois, DC Engineering and Survey. Um, I do have the uh, draft for the legal instrument. I don't know if the board wants to see this, or if I just want to get a stand and chuck it.
Come back here. Thank you.
Um, so that was, that was that item and as far as the soil testing, that'll just be, be done once there's equipment on site. We don't want to rip up the parking lot at this time. Um, so, I don't know if there's any additional questions or... I think the last hearing, kind of just waiting on the, the peer review and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for uh, four forty-three, uh, South Main Street.
Nineteen...
No, nineteen Thompson.
No, nineteen Thompson Road, I'm sorry. That sounded weird. Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
So, there won't be a vote, you said, until...
Uh, it'll be a decision next month, then we'll vote on the decision and that's it.
We have to close the public hearing first, so...
All right.
That's what we did tonight, we closed the public hearing, so...
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. Oh, okay, I'll stand.
That's uh, site plan, gas station slash convenience store and retail, special permit for signage, four fifteen to four thirty-one South Main Street, Assessor ID one dash H dash five dash zero, and four forty-three South Main Street, Assessor ID one dash H dash seven dash zero. Dasan and Rajah owners, not to try to mention any, seven eighty-six Webster Realty Trust applicant, continued from six thirty to twenty-five.
Want me to start?
Yep.
Rebecca Lee with Arlebek Associates located at Forty School Street in Westfield, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, uh, seven eighty-six Webster Realty Trust, um, for the proposed retail building and auto service station at four thirty-one South Main Street. We were continued at the last meeting on June thirtieth to um, receive the determination from NH ESP, which we have since received, and they issued a no-take, meaning we are not adversely impacting any endangered or protected species. We've also received approval from the Conservation Commission, um, last Monday, um, the twenty-first, and we have addressed all outstanding engineering comments. So, that's where we stand. I'd be more than happy to address any other outstanding comments. I, I also believe there was a, a comment about the lighting at the last meeting. We removed the light pole and submitted a revised photometric plan.
Is that page ten of the revised plans that I'm looking at?
Um, it's sheet SL one. I don't know what exactly page number that is.
Yep, that's SL one.
It's after the landscaping, yeah, next one. Yes.
So, that got removed and that looks different than what I have in front of me. So, that, does that light spillage stop before the end of that page?
It doesn't, it's, it doesn't stop past the property line, but it dramatically reduces the amount of light spillage. So, we're less than one foot candle now, which it was, I think, exceeding five, um, when our last submittal.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can jump in, so this, this revised submittal does keep any light spillage within Main Street, so it does not, does not go beyond Main Street.
Okay.
Whereas if, if you remember, the, the previous one went beyond Main Street.
Yeah, I got the previous one I'm looking at and it looks like it went across Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Did you understand what you're doing?
Any other comments, Chuck?
Uh, so, just one, so I had, we, we talked about the lighting. The other, the other comment, similar to the last application, is this applicant is requesting to do soil testing for stormwater, uh, prior to construction. And with both of these cases, um, you know, they're, they're kind of extenuating circumstances in that, in this case here, they're, and I'm pointing across the street, cause that's where it's located, um, they're, they're still using the site, that, you know, the business is open, that the test pits, the location of the test pits would be required to be, you know, right at the, either at the building or at the entrance of the building, so it's, and then, and they would be very deep test pits, um, so it would be very disruptive and, and difficult to do with the existing business remaining open.
So, you, can you do it later, when you start construction?
Yes, yes, and, and the applicant understands that, like, you know, if they have, it causes changes to the design, they need to come back and that sort of thing.
All right, that's fine.
Any other questions?
I'll answer mine.
Need a motion to...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for four forty-three South Main Street.
Just a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Is it the same deal, you guys are voting next year?
Yep, so it'll be a decision written with conditions and soil infiltration will be one of them and we'll vote, we'll discuss and vote at our next meeting, so...
Very good. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
All right. Good luck.
Next item is a special permit application, additional height and signed square footage of existing pylon sign, two hundred Gore Road, Assessor ID six dash D dash seventeen dash zero, Sareto Signs, fifteen Dewey Street, Worcester, Mass., applicant, and Indian Ranch Realty, two hundred Gore Road, Webster, Mass., owner. Said site is located in the Business Four B Four and Lake Watershead Protection, LWP zoning district, continues from six thirty.
Good evening, uh, my name is Sean McGowan with Sareto Signs. Um, I was here last month, uh, discussing this. Um, I'm looking for a special permit for the increase in height and square footage of the existing sign, uh, the existing sign cabinet that is at Indian Ranch. Um, it's a internally illuminated light, uh, light cabinet. It's forty-one point two-five square feet. We're looking to update those spaces on the existing cabinet and um, install LED lighting internally and increase, uh, take the Indian Ranch, uh, title off the face and put it on a separate, um, fabricated header. Uh, the square footage for the fabricated header, um, it's fifteen inch by one twenty is, is the face size, so it's an additional twelve and a half square feet, but if you include the decorative cap and the separation trim that's below the header and the cabinet, um, it's an additional twenty, twenty square feet. So, it, it increases the total height of the sign, uh, twenty-four inches, if you include the, uh, the decorative trim pieces for the cap and the, the separation trim between the cabinet and the new header. And we're also, um, fabricating new, uh, pole ramp. fabricating new, uh, pole ramps to, to kind of give it more of a sleeker, um, cleaner streamlined design.
Over the cover of the poles?
Right, because right now they're, they're existing steel, they're round, they're rusted, they're two different sizes. The lower half is larger than the top half, and trying to keep it, keep the sides of the sign, um, like a smoother, uh, continuous line down to the ground, instead of the way that it is right now, where the existing sign bumps into the, um, to the electronic message sign as below, and then down to the poles and down to the ground.
Alright, so we're going...
The new header will also have LED illumination inside it, so the only thing on the header that lights is the lettering. So the background of the header is opaque.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might, um, provide you with some information that would be helpful to you. I spoke with Mr. McGowan and the electronic message sign, because we, we talked about the, the, um, the faults that we had in the advertising, public hearing notice, uh, for the electronic message sign, and because the electronic message sign, uh, requires its own special permit, and they've decided to go forward with changing the electronic message sign. So they're going to apply for that separately, which means it'll be a whole new public hearing notice. Uh, there'll be a whole new process. He was aware of that. There were options he had with regards to withdrawing without prejudice, and they decided they want to move forward and get everything else going forward and built, and then get the electronic message sign. Um, it's definitely in the property owner's best interest to make that sign legal, and then you're able to, through the electronic sign bylaw, uh, condition it with regards to, um, some of the other issues relating to light spillage and the number of times the message changes. So they're, they're prepared to come in and apply for that permit.
Okay.
So we're, so tonight we're just talking about the top portion of the sign?
Yes, everything but this.
Right, so...
Yeah, the, the top, uh, 24 inches above the existing cabinet, by just including the description as to what we're doing to change it.
I get that. So we're going from how many square feet to how many square feet?
Would you be including the, the cap and the trim, so the total?
Well, the sign, to, to me, the cap isn't part of the sign. You know, you have the, um, the, you know, if I looked at the plan, you have, you know, we're Indian Ranch, and then you have Indian Princess, and you have the Samuel Slater. So what's that, you know, and you have it laid out in inches, but...
Yeah, so the, uh...
What's that?
The increase in square footage for the Indian Ranch, um, graphic panel, I guess, would be 12 and a half square feet, additional to the 41 and a quarter square feet.
Because it's all on one sign now, right? So you separate the two?
Yeah, yeah, because it gives, right now, the existing sign, uh, with the Slater's Restaurant and the Indian Princess logos with the Indian Ranch logo, it's very crowded, and it's going to give a little bit more, um, breathe around the Indian Princess and Slater's, well, to kind of like, separate them to a little better visibility, um, a little more appealing. I believe, I have in my briefcase, but the, the sign prior to the sign being installed, if I'm not mistaken, was a larger square footage than, than this is, than what I'm proposing.
Alright, so you're going from 41 square feet, 41 and a quarter to, and you're adding on 12 and a half on top of that?
Yes.
So we're going to be at 50, let's call it?
53 and three quarters.
53 and three quarters, okay. I guess since our bylaw is for 40 square feet, right?
No, that's, uh, for freestanding signs.
Freestanding signs, different?
Let's go. I think it's 24 square feet total. And a double-sided sign, each side counts as its own square footage.
Okay, so we're up to 100 square feet.
They're just down?
Just down.
Up?
Signs.
Signs. Oh, there's a couple of spots with signs.
Okay. This isn't a business district, so that would be a freestanding sign. 24 square feet, and the height shall not exceed 12 feet.
Alright.
When it comes time for you to make a decision, I'll do that side-by-side analysis that I've done with other sign permits, so you can see exactly...
Yep.
Did you say this is not a business district, or?
This isn't a business district.
Okay.
Alright, so we're going to 18 and a half square, 18 and a half feet tall?
Is it 18?
Yep, that's what 23 is. Okay, so, um, we're making, you said, the height comparison from the old one to the new one is how much?
Including the, the cap and the trim is 24 inches.
24 inches, so we're making it two feet taller.
You don't need to include the cap, Dewey, is that? The cap, I guess it's part of the sign, I thought we were just kind of, things with words on it.
Yeah, the Indian Ranch graphic panel is, uh, 15 inches tall.
How far is the sign from the road? I know there was, regulation is supposed to be 10 feet from the road? Right there at the bottom, yeah.
Well, I see the existing, from the edge of the street to the pole.
Yeah, 10 feet, no sign shall be 10 feet from a roadway. And this one is?
Uh, could be.
Well, if you count the edge of it.
Yeah.
We're pretty close to 10 feet.
Yeah.
You did receive department comments, um, one of the departments did comment, um, mostly on the electronic message sign, which will be dealt with in the next application. There were no comments about, you know, distance from the road.
It looks like it's fairly close, right? Want to get out there and measure that? Somebody, somebody call it behind you, or?
I, I have two important questions.
Microphone, you need to be at a microphone.
So?
Um, is the current sign within the parameters of the town bylaw at its current size, number one? And number two, is the, was the current sign approved by the planning board? I'd like to know that record of it, because I don't think it was. The, the actual physical sign, not the electronic message sign, that does not have a permit, but the actual sign itself, um, does have a building permit issued by the building commissioner at the time. Uh, there was no sign bylaw when that permit was issued.
And that wasn't brought to the planning board either, was it?
No, because there was no bylaw.
Okay.
So, is there a bylaw now?
Yes.
Yeah, there is.
Does it bylaw now?
What we're discussing now is just the stationary sign, so if you, you drive past Indian Ranch, we're just discussing the top part that says Indian Ranch, and has the Indian Princess and Samuel Slaters.
Alright, so that's one subject. When will the, um, electronic sign come to fruition, or?
I believe it was stated that, well, there's, probably next month, I would assume.
This, this coming month?
Uh, we haven't received, he, he's going to have to apply for the application, Indian Ranch will, for the electronic.
Hasn't applied for yet, he has to do that separate.
So we can assume that this larger sign, and then we're going into the electronic signage, really will bring more traffic, more congestion? And what's being done about the traffic now, and how dangerous it is for residents to get on and off Gore Road, on and off Kildare? It's, I, I was in the traffic from the Fish and Game last week for over 22 minutes. More, people have had more problems in the past. Uh, with previous owners, there had been a shuttle, a free shuttle, to go from the Fish and Game to the property, to Indian Ranch, so traffic could freely flow. We're at a dead standstill, more signage, more traffic, more danger. Um, my neighbor could not come, but he told me on the last show, a Jeep cut him off from the left lane, going to the right lane to get right onto the Indian Ranch property. You know, I, if we had more, uh, space or land, we could do what other venues do and have Jersey barriers. Right now, there is nothing except bumper-to-bumper traffic. Bigger signage, more people, and more traffic.
Is that when there's concerts, or is that all the time?
Concerts, but now the, the board approved more concerts. So now, there was a concert Thursday night, and you should have seen the traffic Thursday night. And it's not only the traffic, there's no sidewalk. People are parking at the lodge and walking on a, two abreast, maybe three. I saw a whole family walking side by side, because they had to park far and then walk, how they were killed, or at least hit. But it's the walkers, and they're also coming from the other end, the, um, upper Gore end. And there's parking up there, no sidewalks. It's an accident waiting to happen, so bigger sign, more cars, more danger, and absolutely more inconvenience for all of us on Gore Road, off of Gore, Upper, Lower, and all of Kildare Island. It's really a hazard. Uh, Mr. Chairman, could, could you ask her to say her name and address for the record? Faith Rubin, 59, 5/9, Lakeview Road, Webster.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And do you send the notices out?
Yeah, the notices go out, sorry. Well, it's whatever is on the assessor's record. You have to talk to Mark Becker about that. Talk to the assessor, he's the one who...
Is that Becker?
Yep. Can I answer another, any other questions?
Yeah.
I think Gloria, do you want to say something?
Did you name an address for the record?
Gloria Ricker, 16 Fairfield Street, Webster. Um, I wanted to ask about the electronic sign. Uh, is it going to be on all night, or just the certain times of the, in the evening? Um, the reason why I'm asking that is that right now, I can, in my kitchen, I have the lights from the gas station. And I'm down on the lower part of Fairfield Street, in other words, you go down Kildare, and I'm off of Kildare. What am I going to be looking at now? Am I going to see two signs? You know, I, I don't understand. Um, the gas station's on pretty much all the time. Is Indian Ranch going to be on all the time? Could he answer that, or does he not?
Well, we're not doing the electronic sign, that's going to be a separate issue.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're just doing the sign itself, the poles and that.
The, the other issue I have is also the traffic. And everybody says, well, you have to be careful, an ambulance isn't going to get there, this, that, and the other thing. An individual cannot get to the ER in an emergency in their own car when the traffic is so bad, which has happened to me. I need to go to the emergency room, I just waited and waited because I knew I couldn't get through that traffic. And that's my concern. And I remember a long, long time ago, that they used to rent space someplace, probably up in the industrial park, and they used to bus people down. I don't know if it was Indian Ranch or the, the present owner or the previous owner, and we didn't have this traffic. But my concern is that individual, people aren't going to move aside like an ambulance, and you're just not going to get there. And I was bleeding significantly, and, uh, I eventually got there, but I waited until all the traffic had dissipated, because I knew I wasn't going to make it, sitting there in the car. So I think that part is kind of dangerous for us, and if we could solve that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So looking at the distance, just going up and down Gore Road on Google Maps, it looks like, um, the lodge and the, there's a smoke shop as well there. That, that looks like it's, they're within 10 feet. Um, but, you know, the newer construction mobile, that appears to be, I would say that freestanding sign where they have the, uh, the prices listed. To me, that looks like that's at least 10 feet from the edge of the road.
That would be clear, yeah.
You know, seeing that's newer construction, you know, if we allow, you know, I...
It's like a 20 feet.
I don't have an issue with them going with a bigger sign, but I think with a bigger sign, they need to conform with the setback.
Which is, there's plenty of room to pull it, set it back, too.
Yeah, there's, there's, he has room, yes.
May I ask, why does it have to be bigger? And it's almost avaricious. It, it doesn't make sense. I mean, there are thousands of people who come with this sign. So it's green and avariciousness. Why a bigger sign than this? Well, what is the rationale behind a bigger sign? What, what are they, what, what's the objectivity in a bigger sign?
Well, I think we'll, that's not a question for us to, uh, answer, so...
It's an up, it's a updated design, has high-efficiency LED lighting inside of it, replacing the existing lighting inside the existing cabinet. And creating less crowd in the design of the, of the current design of the face. So they're, they're, they're looking for, just an updated design. And doing so, taking the Indian Ranch title out of the cabinet and putting on its own header, is what creates that updated design.
Why does it have to be so high? What, what's wrong with the existing height?
I don't have an answer to that. It's...
It's something that we really need to think about.
Are you increasing the height of the overall sign?
Yeah, with that, with the fabricated header on top of, um, the existing cabinet. If you include the fabricated cap and the trim ring between the header and the cabinet, it's an additional 24 inches tall. It doesn't change the width, or anything like that, so it stays, stays the same distance from the road, uh, it just, it goes an additional 24 inches tall. So it's not obstructing traffic, it's not obstructing anybody exiting, it's not obstructing pedestrians walking underneath it, because even the existing EMC, I believe, is 84 inches to the bottom, so it's seven feet to the bottom.
Now, are those lit from inside, those signs?
The existing cabinet has...
No, the new one you want to put in?
Yes, and just, the only thing that lights is the red lettering.
Oh, the red lettering, okay.
Yeah, the white background.
Same as Slater and all that, it's not going to be lit?
The Indian Princess and Samuel Slater is lit, as it currently is entirely. But the, the entire face of, uh, that cabinet lights.
From inside?
Yes.
Okay, so why, why?
She'll need to come to the microphone.
Sorry.
If Indian Ranch is going to be lit, and that really is offensive to neighbors, as she said, and she represents a whole group, why did you say that we're not talking about it, we're, oh, we can't talk about it, we're only talking later about the illuminated sign?
No, we're not talking about the digital display underneath. They're not doing that right now.
Okay.
They're not changing that.
The Indian Ranch sign will be illuminated.
Is it illuminated now?
It doesn't exist now.
The existing cabinet, that, that currently says Indian Ranch, Indian Princess, and Samuel Slater's Restaurant, is internally open. Slater's Restaurant is internally illuminated, the entire face lights.
Okay.
Every other-
So it's going to stay the same, just separated in the world?
The existing, the new design, the cabinet that shows Indian Princess and Samuel Slater's Restaurant is that same existing cabinet.
Okay.
But bigger and taller.
That's what that illuminates. The Indian Ranch header on top that we're proposing, the new design of the fabricated header, that internally illuminates but only the text, not the background. That's illumination, if you compare the two to the existing cabinet, will light as is, with newer LEDs inside of it. Actually, I think the existing cabinet has lamps, if I'm not mistaken. So the new cabinet is going to be higher efficiency, greener LEDs inside and new faces, the new header on top is just the text illuminates.
So it will be bigger and brighter, is the essence. The sign is-
That's what I wanted to ask, is the new updated lighting an increase in luminosity or are the same amount of lumens just done?
Same.
The Indian Ranch sign will be illuminated in addition to what exists.
But just the text, not-
Just the red text.
Right, not the white background, it's not the text.
But enough in its height to interfere with the residents because it's being raised higher. As Gloria said, it affects people on Kildare. There's a lot of people. Why higher, why bigger?
Any more comments, any more discussion?
Nope, I'm all, I'm all set.
Alright, so I'm looking at the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the additional site and sign square footage for 200 Gore Road.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public meeting, site plan application, 5 Linwood Street, Assessor ID 13-J-18-0, two duplexes on one lot, All-Star Homes, applicant owner. Site is located in a multiple family residential MFR zoning district, continued from 6:30.
Mr. Chairman, I will let you know that I did speak with the engineer. The newest information that came into us came in over the weekend and there was not enough time for staff review.
Christopher McLeary, McLeary Engineering, I'm here on behalf of All-Star on the, on the proposed site plan application. Robert Duff, who was an engineer working on the project, so I'm here just to introduce myself. He's since retired, so I understand that there is peer review that needs to occur before the board can vote on it, but I just wanted to show my face and say hello. We will be, and we have talked to Mr. Eaton on, on the project, so we will be supplying, providing that information and going through the process as required, so.
So I guess we should just continue with that?
Yes, the next meeting is August 25th, so you'll need a vote to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue 5 Linwood Street to August 25th at 6:30 PM.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, you will see in front of you a draft decision for the signs for Papagino's. It obviously did not make it onto the agenda, so you can't take action. You have 90 days from the close of the hearing, so you're well within it. It's also, it's also in the applicant's best interest to have all of the members who are eligible to vote present because that is a super majority vote and that is in the applicant's favor.
Okay. So we just close the public, well, just continue, okay.
Nothing to close.
Alright. Any engineering updates?
I don't, I don't think I really have that much new to report. I did the stormwater infiltration, bottom inspection for 138 East Main Street today, that was, that was good. I sent you a report on that.
Yep.
Otherwise, things have been, just, construction's been kind of moving along.
The medical waste place, so they're, they're pretty much done. The Worcester Road, the medical waste.
No, they had, I had a bunch of comments on their ASBIL plan.
Okay.
Which, which I think you should have gotten a copy of.
Yeah, I got something in the mail, yeah.
So, so, yeah, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of things on there, some of which, can I discuss this at this meeting?
For the ASBIL?
Yeah.
No, we'll have to put that on the next agenda.
Okay.
What we can, what I can do though is put on the agenda for the next meeting, an update on 64 the Worcester Road and 56 Worcester Road.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll put those two on there and, is that it for you?
What about the cul-de-sac that they were trying to put in at the end of?
Camille?
Camille, yeah. That, that's been dealt with.
I'll let, I'll let Ann comment on that.
We'll put it on the list of things to discuss at the next meeting.
I mean, somebody's got to do Mike's job and, you know, bring up all these projects that are just coming to, hey, yeah, the high school.
Don't make me say open meeting lots. The other thing that I would like to put on the agenda with the board's permission is for you to adopt a policy at the next meeting regarding late submission of material for engineering review.
Okay.
We'll put something together for your consideration.
Alright.
Any other projects you'd like to know about at the next meeting?
That's what I think it was coming. I remember going on other people's property and it was, that was a mess.
138 East Main, I'd like to discuss-
Is that, which one is that?
There's been an issue with their signage, so.
Which, which one's 138 East Main?
The new gas station going up across from the one you just released tonight.
Oh, right, yeah, the one where that was a historical home.
So, alright, we got a list of things to put on for August.
Alright.
Are they coming through that Burger King parking lot at all or they, they're just going to go completely separate?
No, they have their own entrances. That was, that was one of the suggestions that we had made, you know, way, way back.
I know, I brought that up at their first public hearing, they're like, no, we're not doing that.
And they said, they said that was a no-go.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the good thing is they lowered that a lot, a lot, so it's easier to take a right if you're coming on from Thompson Road on to Gore Road.
Yeah.
So lowering the line will help a lot with the sight line because you can turn right on red and before you were just kind of hitting the gas and praying that nobody was going to come down Main Street.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Microphones off, please.